All right, we call to order this meeting of the Marion City Council regular session on Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is a pledge by the United States of America into the Republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskin?
Here.
Mayor Abalasi? Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
All right, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. This brings us to the part of the agenda, public forum. This section is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council in this part of the agenda? With that, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A one through G one, resolutions three one seven five one through three one seven six two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve items A one through G one, resolutions three one seven five one to three one seven six two. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to note for the record that I'll be abstaining from the consent agenda tonight. Thanks.
Make a gauge. All in favor of approving the consent agenda listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention. Thank you. We open the public hearing regarding the two thousand and twenty-four storm sewer project, and you are here to give us a brief overview?
Yes, so for this particular project, this actually combines a couple of our projects into one. So it actually is going to be our storm sewer project for the year, and it also is partially curb ramp repair project as well. A lot of the areas when we do the work on the back of curb, that curb also falls apart as we do that with the trench. So for this project, it is on Twenty-Fourth Avenue from Twenty-Seventh Street to Thirty-First Street on the south side, and that subdrain that we're putting in there. So people that have sump pumps in their basement, then they can take that subdrain. So a lot of these areas are targeted based on information we got from Public Service or Winter Operations where we're having ice issues. So we can get that drain tile up to them so they can tie that in there so we don't have that continual maintenance issue. Another one is Twenty-Seventh Avenue from Twenty-six fifty-one, Twenty-Seventh Avenue to Twenty-Seventh Street, again on the south side in that subdrain. And then another location is Tenth Avenue and Twenty-Sixth Street. So it's the two intakes that are actually showing up on the screen with twenty-four inch reinforced concrete pipe to connect those two, and then again fixing a lot of those curbs in those areas adjacent to we're putting in the subdrain. For this project, we did receive ten bids. There is a detailed bid tab in your packet of the, all the bids that we got. The low bid came from Rachi Construction at one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars, which was eighty-five point eight percent of the engineer's estimate. It has a start date between May twenty-eighth and August fifth with forty working days and three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages if they do not complete within their timeframe. So we are recommending to proceed with the project and with Rachi Construction.
Is there anyone here who would like to address the council related to this public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-four storm sewer project? Please come forward if you do. Mike, did we have any comments submitted?
We did not.
I have not received any.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will close the public hearing regarding the two thousand and twenty-four storm sewer project and move on to our motion.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty-four storm sewer project as follows. This will be resolutions three one seven six three and three one seven six four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty-four storm sewer project as follows, resolutions three one seven six three and three one seven six four. Discussion.
Mike, does this, does this work include any installation or rebuild of either new or existing French drains that are adjacent to the street?
Yes.
And I, if I missed that in the council memo, I apologize for that. I just, I just know, generally speaking, I've received, you know, commentary about sump pumps dumping out on the street. So anyway.
Yeah, so the first two bullet items, those locations are drain tile that we're putting in. So that's our, our drain tile on the back of the street. And then we send letters ahead of time so that the property owners that are adjacent to that, if they get that subdrain out to the curb before we get there, we will have Rachi tie it in so that it's tied in and ready to go. Same thing with the, the Tenth Avenue. If they were to have a subdrain in there and they have it out there, we'll, we'll core drill it and put it right into our storm sewer. So that's what this project is, the purpose of it to do is to alleviate those issues of the ice dams that we have.
So I should note that French drain equals subdrain, and I should read a little more carefully. Thank you.
So Mike, I'm assuming, again, some of the other issues we've had is some of those drain tiles are above ground and just dump out in the street. Again, a couple of years ago, we just had that right weather in the winter where it was cold enough, but yet warm enough that the water got out there, then they ended up with all that ice in the street. So then people not be allowed to have the drain tile on the top of their yard dumping into the street once we hook our tile in?
Correct. So let's say someone that lives on Twenty-Fourth Avenue where we put our subdrain in. So again, we tell them ahead of time, run it out to the curb, we'll attach it. Let's say the following winter, they have not attached it.
Yep.
And they're dumping into the street. It's actually an illicit discharge, and we will make them.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty-four storm sewer project, resolutions three one, seven six three, and three one, seven six four. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-four dash zero one, amending section two sixty-three dash twelve of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding location restrictions of sexually oriented businesses, and this is the final consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one, amending sections two six three twelve of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding location restrictions of sexually oriented businesses. The final consideration, any discussion?
Just a comment. As established in our prior two readings of this, this just basically causes internal consistency or alignment within our ordinances. So I think this is a good maneuver.
All right. All in favor of ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one, amending section two six three twelve of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding location restrictions of sexually oriented businesses. Final consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, public forum. This time is set aside for comments from the public. Please understand that the city council will not take any action on your comments at this meeting due to requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so at a future meeting. And for anyone addressing the council or for anyone who is watching this evening, we do have the public forum, rules of procedure. They are posted on the podium there. But just as a review for people who are not here, we ask that you complete a yellow comment card. They're found at the staff table. You can turn those into the city clerk. Reason for that is if there's follow-up or we need to reach you, that gives us some contact information to do so. Please do not approach the council bench here. Please submit materials to the city clerk for distribution to the council. Once called forward by the proceeding officer, person shall step up to the podium, state your name and group affiliation, if any. Address the council as mayor and members of council. Speakers should limit comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the proceeding officer. Speakers should be respectful of the council and audience members and should be courteous, polite, and civil. And speakers should refrain from making personal verbal attacks on members of council staff or other residents. No speaker may engage a conduct or speech that is imminently threatening to any person that incites violence or that is obscene. Please avoid repeating comments or points that have been previously shared. Failure to adhere to these guidelines or engaging in other disruptive behavior may result in removal from the meeting. But we don't want that to be too scary because we do welcome council, our comments, public comments. So please, if you would like to address the council, please come forward.
Hello, and thank you for taking the time to hear me again.
Excuse me, did you want to give us your name or did you turn in a card?
I, I did fill out the card last time, and I do have that in my speech, and I will be giving my name. I won't restate everything that I did last time, but I know that there was a lot of information given at the last meeting. It was brought to my attention that someone representing the city of Marion contacted Iowa News Now, Channel Two News, and told them that I was a self-filled First Amendment auditor. This is not correct, so I'd like to clarify who I am by restating the same introduction I utilized two days or two weeks ago. My name is Bailey. I'm Christian, a humanitarian and co-founder of a volunteer organization here in Lynn County. I've been a Marion resident for twenty years. I purchased property in Marion twice, and most importantly, I'm currently raising three children in Marion. It is important to note that my words were quoted, and a video of me was used by Iowa News Now. I wrote down my name, contact information, and stated who I was on entry into the last meeting as directed on the yellow card. I also provided my information verbally when I was asked by Mr. Mayor. I regret that I don't know the pronunciation of his last name, or I'd, I'd address him that way. So I don't understand why a representative of the city, of the city would tell the media anything other than what I stated. I was not sure what a First Amendment auditor was. I had to look it up. It appears it's a group of individuals that film members of authority and test their knowledge on the Constitution. Though I am wearing one today, I didn't wear a camera at the last meeting. I didn't think I needed one. Since speaking out, I've quickly learned exactly why I do need to wear one. As the days passed after I spoke out, I did have a lot of First Amendment, Amendment auditors reach out to me. They advised me that I didn't have to provide my name or address and told me I should have invoked my Fourth Amendment right when I was asked to give my home address to the council. They expressed concerns for my safety. To be honest with you, I didn't feel comfortable giving my address to the entire council and anyone else who may be watching. However, I made a conscious decision to do so. If it was a requirement in order for me to make my voice heard, then I was willing to do it. The fact that I took that risk alone should reflect how important these issues are to me and how sure I am. The Marion Police Department employees are still acting immaturely and aggressively, to put it lightly. As I suspected, it's gotten worse towards me in the past two weeks after I spoke out. I did not expect to get emotional, so I apologize. It is not just the Marion Police Department that will retaliate against you, it's all of their affiliates as well. It's not just you that they will come after. They will identify who is important to you, and they will go after them as well. Children as well. They'll go after your children if they are, if you are on their list. So I'm going to provide you all with a copy of my speech from the last meeting in case you may want to reconsider my requests and choose to take action. I'm also including a copy of the news article I mentioned and a photo of the communications window that I took two days ago. I won't rest on these issues. The reality is that I can't. I am now an official target of the Marion Police Department and their affiliates. I'm hopeful that you all take action and help us as we desperately need it. Thank you for your time. And city clerk, did you say? Okay.
And, um, if you would.
Thank you, Bailey. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Mayor and city council members, I start off saying thank you for your time sincerely. And I don't really have anything to complain about today. I just wanted to announce who I represent and who I'm speaking for. I represent an educational nonprofit with Bailey Simmons, co-founder. Our nonprofit is Legal Assistance with Public Learning Commitment, and our mission is to empower the public with knowledge, tools, and resources to help them in a legal arena. We're incorporating artificial intelligence to help facilitate our mission, and we are a religious nonprofit, so we are protected. If I didn't say it earlier, my name is Nash Randall Brown, and I speak for anybody that can't speak. I speak for the ones that have been duped by judicial misconduct. I speak for anybody that cries for reform but doesn't know how to speak for themselves. I see myself as an aristocratic leader, and and I will do what I have to do, like come into these meetings, public outreach, community awareness, to reform our broken judicial system that we all know is broken, has been for a while. I don't want to highlight on anything specific. But it's, it's, it's broken. So that's who I am, that's who I speak for, and that's who I represent. And I will be coming back to these city council meetings and, you know, I will pledge to try and be at all of them. And hopefully, we can address this issue together because you guys do have a fiduciary responsibility being in the positions that you guys are in. You guys have to look out for the public's interest, best interests, public safety, and so on. So that being said, you guys are in a fiduciary position and have a fiduciary responsibility for us. And hopefully, we can stop, you know, butting heads and start working together. Because it's, I mean, it's, it's time for change, it's time for reform. Our government frankly sucks, I believe. If you don't think so, you know, turn the news on. And that's our federal government. This is our state government. We're independent, and we have the, we have the sovereign authority as a state government to govern ourselves. And by doing so, I don't believe that we should continue to, you know, follow in the steps of our, of our out-of-hand federal government. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you guys in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Were you able to fill out a yellow card?
No.
She's a minor. I, I'm happy to do it for her.
My name is Aubrey, and I'm a resident of Marion, and I attend school in Marion. If you walk into the Marion Police Department, you can see that they have a, some type of reflective tent on their windows. And in my opinion, it is an excessive amount. You're practically staring at a mirror when you walk in. And if anyone else were to do that or have that amount of tent on their vehicle, they would be served with a window tent ticket, which is assessed, assessed at a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents per violation. On Iowa DOT dot gov, it states that Iowa law prohibits the operation of a motor vehicle with a front windshield or front side windows that do not meet a standard transparency of seventy percent or more light transmittance. I'm sure there are many reasons for tent to be illegal on vehicles, mostly because it's important for fellow drivers to be able to see each other clearly. And when practicing, practicing defensive driving, it's important to be able to see other people's body languages. I think that it is also important when dealing with the public while they face difficult situations, just as it is while driving. I think that it's important to be visible while driving. It is important for professionals at the police station to be visible as well. How is it fair that we as a community are now allowed to have more than seventy percent transparency, but the Marion Police Department can exceed that limit in their communication window and other windows? Thank you.
Thank you. Still in the public forum, is there anyone else?
Hello, everybody. With all due respect, I'll be exercising my Fourth Amendment right under the United States Constitution. I want to start out by talking about how on the Channel Two News article, I'm going to quote it word for word, "The city of Marion later called the Iowa's News Now newsroom at Broad Cost Park to make sure our crews didn't have any issues with the speakers, which we didn't." That, that's a conspiracy to create a crime, guys. Somebody doesn't have enough to arrest me, but they're so desperate that they're going to fish to try to create a criminal out of somebody for speaking at a public meeting. When you guys accept that, it's no different than China or Russia. We're not even America anymore. The Marion Iowa Police Department only goes with feelings. They don't look at the real criminals. I'm going to talk to you guys about a convicted felon by the name of Eric Anthony Gut Schmidt, the present owner of fifteen oh one First Avenue, Marion, Iowa. He recently has gotten charged with theft. He stole thousands of dollars from the local minorities. And he was never jailed by the Marion Police Department, never beaten up, you know. He, he's getting special treatment because the Marion Police Department is only concerned with feelings and emotions. They have these fragile little egos, and if you bruise their little ego, they will kick the, I'm not going to say what, out of you, steal all your money, harass you, and then let the real criminals go. There could be a real criminal anywhere you go, Walmart, Hy-Vee, right next to you, because real criminals don't go to jail in Marion. The next article I have talks about the two different spellings of Michael Kitz Miller's name. There's K I T S and K I T Z. When you guys promoted him to chief of police, you need to look in both the names. I have some paperwork here that goes over the same exact stuff. One of them is case number eight dot dot one seven C V three oh nine with plaintiff Casey Baskin, a pro se attorney. And it shows the same targeting. It shows how Michael Kitz Miller commits perjury in court and convicts innocent people of crimes that they did not commit. Now, when you run the background check with the S, it's not going to come up. You have to do the background check with the Z. And it just really makes you wonder, he has not just once or twice spelled his name different ways. I have multiple pieces of paper here that show he spells it with a Z and then a Z and a Z, and then all of a sudden it's with an S. And it really makes you wonder, like, it's a loophole in society where somebody can accidentally misspell their name and then erase their whole past, buy themselves a whole new identity. And if you read through these articles, which I'm going to give to the clerk today, you know, it, it, it shows what Michael Kitz Miller does in court. He lies. He, he conspires with people. Like, if you read these, these court cases, you can see how he literally sets people up. It, it, it's, it's so disrespectful to our judicial system to allow a police officer to put false information in over and over again. And you got to think about what, what does it do to that person and their friends and their family? And like, what does that do for us as a society? You know, if you guys want to live that way, you should go to China or Russia because in, in, in the United States of America, we have a constitution. And the mayor, Nicholas Abalasi, who is not here tonight, last meeting, he violated the United States Constitution, the five freedoms of the Constitution. One of them is redressing your government. Another one is freedom of speech. He not only spoke over flex your freedoms, but he also cut them off before the five minutes. Just because you don't like what somebody's saying in America doesn't mean you can just cut off their five minutes. It doesn't mean that you can, you know, take that away. Like, when, when it's acceptable to take that away, when the retaliation is accepted, then this is no longer America. The, I mean, the only difference between the Marion Police Department and a gang member, like a Blood or Crip or a GD, is that the Marion Police have a badge to go with their gun. They have qualified immunity, so they can continue to do these things, whether it's, you know, beating someone up in the street or lying in court, because the end result is the same. You're taking an individual and just creating problems they have to deal with for the rest of their lives. So I do have all the paperwork I talked about today. I'm aware a lot of this may sound not real, but all the court cases that I brought up today, they're all right here in this folder.
If you'd like to hand those to Rachel, thank you.
And just one more thing. In two thousand and twenty-two, this convicted felon that owns fifteen oh one First Avenue, he got hundreds of thousands of dollars from Lynn County, hundreds of thousands of dollars. He also, above and beyond that, gets twenty years of tax privileges that save him even more hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the whole narrative from Marion about there is a grant for the Henderson House, and once the grant is approved, then the repairs will be made. The grant was made in two thousand and twenty-two, and the grant money isn't going towards any repairs on the Henderson House. And the reason why I know this is the guy stole thousands of dollars from Menard.
Five minutes are up.
What he stole was vinyl flooring. So when you guys give him this money, it's not going to the Henderson House, and you guys cannot ignore this forever. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council during, during our public forum time? With that, we will move to council comments. I'm going to start with Randy.
Thank you. I do not have any, though. Thanks. Well, I have a couple of items. Just want to maybe start the new year in a new way relative to comments that I will plan to make. As you know, I've been a member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Last year was chairperson, and again, with no help from my friend Randy, I was re-elected chair for both the Policy Board and the Executive Committee. And so in that regard, while I have to represent Marion along with Randy and Kim Downs and Kesha when she is there, and Mike, you're on the, on the technical committee, very clearly as representing Marion, I also have to then think in general about the conduct and the progress that the MPO as a general organization with multiple entities being represented. So what that obligation, I think, conveys is I'm going to try to periodically provide a concise update of key issues that are under consideration by the MPO. So with that being said, and I'll have to have Mr. Barkalow check the, the accuracy of what I will enunciate. So I'll leave it at that. Okay. One thing I should just say materially today, while it was facilitated out of Representative Hinson's office, Marion, as I think we generally know, received seven million dollars of federal funding to help us with the Albernett Road Extension Project. Due to the strange and wonderful federal requirements, that had to be reflected in our local transportation improvement plan. And so both the Executive Committee and the Policy Board including, included that as a formal revision to the local planning documents so that that can fully meet all federal requirements and I think paves the way for our utilization of those funds for that project. Okay, that's all I have.
I've got two things. First, on behalf of Will and my youngest brother, I'll say, go pack, go. I'm surprised he didn't do that already. The other comment I will make is, obviously, we have had, the last two weeks have been two of the toughest weather weeks back-to-back that we've had in almost my entire lifetime, except for that storm of April seventy-three. And I want to compliment the Public Services and Parks Department. And I want to compliment the Public Services and Parks Departments on the job that they did. I mean, 22 inches of snow in four days is extremely challenging. All of the people working to remove that snow, I, we know, put in, they were putting in 16-hour days. They had to be absolutely exhausted after that week. But on top of all of that great work they did, I did receive a number of unsolicited comments from people telling me how good a job the streets looked in Marion. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I concur with that, and I kind of shout out and thank you to the Team Marion, the teams that were out plowing, the folks that are out working on those days, the rest of the people in our community that make it happen, whether it's first responders and medical and the grocery stores and everything else. I don't know if anybody was in any of our grocery stores in the couple of days or the days in between the two storms, and it looked like, I mean, it looked like the apocalypse was coming and then, and it did for a few days, as far as how many, how shut down we all were. So thank you to everyone who got that done, and we do appreciate it. So with that, that is what I have, and we will move on to the closed exempt session.
Okay, Your Honor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation and exempt session regarding collective bargaining as permitted under Section 21.51(c) and Section 20.17(c) of the Code of Iowa. These are two separate measures.
Second.
Can we get the legal statement for that?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, Section 21.51(c) and the exempt session, exempt session to be appropriate under Iowa Code, Section 20.17(c).
We have a mo, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Misskaman?
Yes.
Ms. Mensor?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
That, we are adjourned.